Okay, we're ready, ladies and gentlemen. Ready to start. So I'm going to introduce each candidate. First, we have Republican candidate, Mr. Matthew Skirbo Sr., to the far left. And to his right, Republican candidate, Ms. Melissa Paulus. And to her right, Mr. Bernie Fay, Democratic candidate. And to my left, his Democratic candidate, Mr. Derek Lewis. And I'd like to... Thank you so much, thank you so much. So I'd like to mention that all candidates drew for the order. There were... I will ask them questions. So I'll always ask Ms. Paulus the first question first, then followed by Mr. Fay, then followed by Mr. Skirbo, then followed by Mr. Lewis. So we'll start out with the first question. Ms. Paulus, what motivated you to run for town council?
I've been attending council meetings for 78 years now. And I've honestly been very disappointed in the lack of transparency and openness with the public in answering questions. A lot of times, I'd ask valid questions and I'd get deer in the headlights. Or the answer would be, "We'll get back to you," we don't get an answer. So I've built my professional career at the Clinton Township Sewerage Authority in public meetings. And we have never treated a resident that has attended a meeting in that manner. There's a lot of backroom deals being made that's unacceptable. Public has every right to know what's going on. And that has to end.
Thank you very much, time is up. And now we'll move on to Mr. Bernie Fay. Mr. Fay, what motivated you to run for town council?
Well, I always enjoyed giving back to our community. You know, whether it was coaching the young athletes of our town for 28 years, or being on various boards throughout my adulthood, or representing the town of Phillipsburg for my eight years on council. I always appreciated giving back to our community. Town council was always the one thing I really enjoyed. And I felt now is a good time to continue on my journey to run for town council once again.
Thank you very much. Mr. Skirbo, what motivated you to run for town council?
I'm a lifelong resident here in Phillipsburg. I'm passionate about volunteering in the community. For the last 15 years, I mentored and coached children in the community through a youth organization called First Town Falcons. I also serve as president on the school board and I am a commissioner in the housing authority. So public service is a passion of mine. I've always put the children of residents first. Though I've been intimidated, slandered, attacked politically, I will stay strong, I'll roll my sleeves up and continue to work hard for the community that I love and help advocate for all the residents. Phillipsburg deserves a fighting chance to thrive once again. And I will be the voice for everyone.
Thank you very much. So Mr. Derek Lewis, what motivated you to run for town council?
So, a lot of people don't know this. I'm actually one of the first people in my... One of the first people on my dad's side to actually purchase a home. I purchased my home here. Me and my wife decided that we wanted to settle down here. Our two little kids are running around right now. Apologize for any inconvenience for anybody here. But they're the reason why I want to run. You know, I want to give back to the community. I believe that as long as I can give, I need to make sure that I'm giving. And they're the reason why I'm doing it, right? So what I invest in our community is going to be for them, is going to be for the residents of Phillipsburg. If I'm not doing that, then I'm just wasting my time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Ms. Paulus, what are the three main points important to your campaign? Your microphone, there you go.
As Councilman Piazza stated previously, public safety is a main concern. We've been out knocking on doors for about 10 weeks now. And speaking with residents, that is the number one concern that comes up all the time. So with my running mates, we have all agreed that we have a plan. And we do want to increase the police force. The other thing is taxes. Again, as Councilman Piazza stated, the budget that has been passed for the last two years has not been a responsible budget. We're going to definitely be looking at tax increase next year and probably several years after that. The other thing is the condition of the town. Not only is there a lot of trash and properties that are not maintained, but there's a lack of enforcement. So we do have plans to address those issues.
Thank you very much. So we'll move on to Mr. Fay. Mr. Fay, what are the three main points important to your campaign?
Well, I think a few of those points is, once, we have to increase revenue. And I believe we have one of the most beautiful natural resources right here called the Delaware River. And I believe by working together, we could create a riverfront property that should have been done by now. But in the past, we have not had a functioning working governing body. And I believe, you know, with a governing body that's functionable and working together, we can establish and develop many new opportunities in businesses that should be here. Also, we have to utilize the UEZ for new businesses. We have revolving loan programs to help establish new businesses. We have advertising money to help the already established businesses redo their frontage and their advertising. And I believe if we do this, it will create revenue.
And so, Mr. Skirbo, what are your three main points important to your campaign?
So my main focus as Councilman will be trying to tackle the quality of life issues in our town first. From public safety to homelessness, addiction, and mental health, these issues cannot be ignored. We must put them at the forefront of our plans. Our police need a permanent state-of-the-art building that can efficiently perform their duties. They put their lives on the line every day and ensure safety and well-being of our residents. They deserve to be treated with honor and should be provided with efficient workplace. When I was on school board as president, I pushed for them to get out of the molded festing building they were subjected to work in. And I will continue to support them and push for resources they need to fight crime, the uptick in crime in our community. I disagree with what the mayor said. There might not be as much crime, but there's a different form of crime that our town is experiencing. We need to fight back and clean our community up first before we can move forward economically.
Thank you very much. And lastly, Mr. Derek Lewis.
Thank you. So for us, really utilizing our resources to the best of our ability, continuing to bring people into Phillipsburg and make sure that they're spending money. I think it's great, you know, I go to Comic Con every year. So as I'm on 80, I see signs saying, "Hey, you know, visit the Poconos." We could be that, we could say, "Hey, visit Phillipsburg," right? In order for us to do that, we need to continue building on what we already have, right? Cal Ripken Field's coming, we have our train rides, farmers markets phenomenal, and the festivals that we have. In addition to that, building stronger relationships with our community partners. I think that that's very important. And I think that's something that we're not tapping into. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nice order of mine, everyone. So I don't distract you to check the timekeepers because they'll show you, you have 20 seconds left and then the X means your time's up. All right, so, Ms. Paulus, with a new congressman in the 118th Congress and new state representation as our senator, how can you get more attention or grant monies from Trenton to provide the state and federal resources for Phillipsburg?
Well, you have to keep up on what's happening in government, on all levels of government. As the administrator for the Clinton Township Sewerage Authority, I do subscribe to the local finance notices, legal municipalities. And you have to keep lines of communication open with every, all levels of government, doesn't matter who they are. And you have to make friends. You have to network and fight for what your community needs.
Thank you very much. So, Mr. Fay, with a new congressman in the 118th Congress and new state representation as our senator, how can you get more attention, grant monies, to Phillipsburg?
Well, we've always had great working relationships with our senators and our congressmen. We've always had meetings with them. We've walked the town of Phillipsburg with them in the past. We've developed plans to work cohesively together and make our community a better community. And there are many grants out there that we have to take advantage of. Grants are provided by the state every day. And we have to look at them to see which ones actually work best for us. And we have to take the time to apply for them and then achieve their grants. And by doing that, you know, we're working with the senator, we're working with the congressman, we're working with the state officials. And that relationship is a round circle revolving thing that shows all of us working as one and functioning as one. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Skirbo, you're good with the question? Is the reading good? You good with it? With a new congressman in the 118th Congress and new state representation as our senator, how can you get more attention and grant money from Trenton to provide the state and federal resources for Phillipsburg?
I think we first have to start with establishing an honest form of government here in town first, being more transparent with our residents. Also, working across the aisle to the betterment of Phillipsburg. The political divide has been ugly in years. We need to push forward, work together, try to establish and reach for grants that we need to better our town. I think communication is key with the senator and assemblyman. I think we do have historically a good working relationship. I think if we keep that moving forward and establish a better government here in town, we could push our town to limits that we have never seen before and greater aspects that would be coming for our town and try to combat the problems that we are having here through grants.
Okay, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you. So getting the right people in front of them, right? We need to stop making Phillipsburg what it's not. You know, I agree with what Matt said. You know, I love that answer of honesty. You know, because we talk about crime, we talk about crime being on the rise, but in reality, it's not there. Did you guys know and tap into on March 21st, '23, they rated us the third best place to live in Warren County? Why would they do that if crime is such a terrible thing? Niche, which is a website, some of the statistics that daily sit on there. We got a B rating for a good place for families to live. B for cost of living. B for crime and safety. B for commute and A for diversity. So as a black male, I mean, I feel perfectly safe here along with my kids. The thing that I'm worried about the most is them crossing the street.
Okay, Ms. Paulus, shorter sentence this time. How can we ignite economic development in Phillipsburg?
Clean it up. Eliminate the corruption, the collusion, the coercion, transparency. Again, you know, for decades, this town has been run mostly by the same people. And that has to end. You definitely need the new blood, you need the experience. And I think I bring that to the table with my experience as administrator with the Clinton Township Sewerage Authority. You have to definitely seek grants. You have to engage with a grant writer, as discussed previously. You can't attract new businesses or even different residents to a town that is dirty. That's an easy fix, to clean up the town, the trash that's all over. Enforcement, code enforcement is huge.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Fay, how can we ignite economic development in Phillipsburg?
Well, first of all, I think, you know, I touched base on it earlier. We have to utilize our natural resource, which is gold to me. We also have the UEZ that is there to help new businesses start. It's helped to create opportunities for people. And also, with talking about the riverfront, there's also, you know, we can do educational things as well and get grants through that. You know, the Indians settled here first. And we could create a little educational facility, you know, showing the, you know, how they lived back then. And they were our first settlers here. And now we're creating an opportunity of education for our children to go and learn some history of our town. So there's all various ways that we could create new opportunities.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Skirbo, how can we ignite economic development in Phillipsburg?
I think first, we have to clean up the blight and the perception of this town. When you look coming from Pohatt and you see the abandoned ice house and you see what used to be the feed mill, it's overgrown with a forest of weeds. It's not very inviting to our town. Our mayor had four years to do something about it. He did not do anything. If we start there, we start downtown and start cleaning it up, we're going to attract businesses. And businesses won't be fleeing to Easton for, because of high rent, because there's no parking. These small issues, if we take care of them first, we can build on the riverfront, we can attract investors. We can be... It's endless what we could do for our town. We have to start with these small things before we can have businesses come here. They don't want to come here now because they see those things that I just said. It's not inviting. We need to clean that stuff up first, and we need to start now. Enough is enough.
Thank you very much. Derek Lewis, how can we ignite economic development here?
Thank you. So again, just piggybacking off what Bernie said. You know, we're not tapping into our resources that are here. Delaware River is right there, what are we doing with it? We have conversations about, you know, building a warehouse and all this other stuff. It really doesn't bring people here. In addition to that, we're not really focusing on our trails either. So those are two areas in itself that we are underutilizing. In addition to that, bringing in the right businesses, right? We need to make sure that the businesses are tailored for the people that we have here, right? Over about 55% of the individuals that live in Phillipsburg fall in between 18 and 65. If you look at that, there's a lot of area that we can tackle and bring businesses in in order for us to be successful and again, make the town look successful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Ms. Paulus, what is your stance on increasing or decreasing property taxes?
Well, the ideal solution to that or situation would be to keep taxes flat because nobody wants to spend any more money than what they have to. But realistically, they have to be increased. Not always at a high rate. I know when you increase things at a low amount, whether, you know, it's a couple bucks, a couple percent, the impact is not so high on the person that it affects, whether it be the homeowner or somebody who's renting. The utilization of that surplus was fiscally irresponsible. I spoke at meetings about that and I could not believe that that's what was happening. And I got laughed at when I questioned it. Again, I, you know, in my professional business as...
Time's up. But thank you. Okay, Mr. Fay. What is your stance on increasing or decreasing taxes?
Well, a wise man that I know once said to me, "Just remember, if you're not going forward, you're going backwards." And it doesn't have to be a lot, you know. But leaving, keeping our taxes flat, we need to have a safety net because eventually, you know, it's going to collapse. We're going to find ourselves in a situation where we need some extra funding and we're not going to have it. So it doesn't have to be a lot. But I believe that by pecking a little bit every year, you know, a half a penny even, okay, it just creates a safety net for when we actually do need it so that we're not running around like chickens with our heads cut off and we're prepared for things that could happen. You know, we always have things like sinkholes happening. And we're dipping in to funding to fix and correct these problems. Well, we're going to need to have funding available for that.
Thank you very much. Mr. Skirbo, what's your stance on increasing or decreasing taxes?
So through my experience on the school board, I ran on, be a watchdog on taxes here in town for residents. And also, I helped eliminate a $25,000 merit bonus for the superintendent. Those are things I'm proud for, is to get up for the community and the residents and being mindful of the taxes. We also were able to accomplish it to go down from 7.7% down to zero the year I left the school board. So I like being conscious of what the money is spent and of course, always looking out for the tax increase in town. I think to have a flat budget in a year in the inflation that we're in, to use the surplus was very irresponsible on the mayor's part. This is going to not be a gradual increase. It's going to be a steep one going forward. And I know that's going to be a big issue to tackle. But you know, like I said, I've always been a watchdog on taxes here for the residents. And I always will continue to do that as a councilman.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Lewis, what's your stance on increasing or decreasing taxes?
So obviously, keeping taxes flat is definitely a priority. The fact that we were able to do that in the last four years, especially with COVID, is phenomenal, right? But you know, look at other areas. Grants, right, reviewing where we can make cuts, reviewing how we can better serve the residents of Phillipsburg. Now, I think the better question is, is... The better question that needs to be answered is, if the tax has increased, why are the taxes being increased? Right, what am I getting now in return because my taxes are going up? So is that going for better infrastructure? Is that going to fund our beloved library? Where is my money going to? So I think with transparency, which is very important, I believe that we can all get on the same page.
Thank you very much. Okay, Ms. Paulus, I'm sure this is one everyone thinks about. Do you think our Main Street downtown is healthy and successful? If not, what would you do to change that?
It definitely isn't. There's a lot of empty storefronts. Again, it all goes back to cleaning it up. You got to pick up the trash, you have to make things look attractive. Public safety is a big issue. We've heard complaints of the lack of lighting and just people hanging out. That is not attracting other businesses here. Businesses have left this area of South Main Street due to lack of code enforcement. So again, you know, cleaning it up, enforcement, police presence, lighting, it all goes hand in hand and will definitely make a difference.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Fay, is our downtown and Main Street healthy and successful? If not, what would you do to change that?
Well, I think first of all, we need to hear from the business owners down on Main Street and listen to their needs and concerns and work together cohesively. Maybe develop a downtown association to work with the UEZ. Ms. Paulus, yeah, you discussed lighting and I agree with you. I know one thing we just did was approve with the UEZ, changing all the lighting structures with new LED lighting to help beautify our downtown. As well as install lumber sitting ones that will create a safety margin while you're walking on the sidewalks. It'll provide more light, okay, for everybody to be safe. So it all starts with listening to the business owners that are there and working together.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Skirbo, what do you think? Is our Main Street downtown healthy and successful? If not, what would you do to change that?
Unfortunately, it's not very healthy right now. I do commend the businesses that are there for giving it a great honest try and trying to provide great businesses to our residents. I do believe if we would have not piecemealed together a parking ordinance that was poorly planned, we could have maybe looked into a two-tier parking garage similar. It'd be smaller than Easton's, but that would help curb the parking situation. A lot of people don't want to have a business there because their main complaint was the parking. And also, holding the landlords accountable for storefronts. If we could do that and the high rents, we lost Main Street Cafe, which was a great place. I used to go for breakfast. They left because of the conditions with the landlord. And they found a suitable place over in Easton. I think if we start at those aspects and work from there. And I also agree with both of you that the lighting issue is a big problem down there. We need to look into.
Okay, Mr. Lewis, how's our Main Street doing in our downtown? Is it healthy and successful? If not, what would you do to change that?
I think that's one of the areas that we have a lot of opportunities to grow. You know, the health building moving forward with that, I believe that's great. Hippocare, you know, I think that's great, bringing people in. Now we just need to make sure that we're again putting the right businesses in so people are staying in Phillipsburg and spending their money here. Again, bringing in the right businesses for the people of Phillipsburg is going to do great. One of the things I, you know, I'm sad into hearing nobody said is that we need a second, we need a secondary access over there where that train is, right? So you know, we haven't gotten there yet. You know, there's only one way out. And the federal government does have a moratorium on the railroad crossing. So we need to tackle it from that front. I believe getting another access is going to allow us to be more successful and bringing the right businesses in. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Okay, Ms. Paulus, how can we ensure a basic level of living conditions for residents in rental units?
Enforcement of the code. If that means that we have to hire more inspectors, that's what we have to do. All properties are supposed to be registered. Also, part of the code is that all rentals are supposed to file a lease for every property. When the tenants change, they are supposed to have the properties inspected. That's not happening. Again, like I said, you know, leases are not being filed with the town. It all goes back to the lack of enforcement.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Fay, put your microphone closer so everyone can hear you closely.
Well, this is one of the reasons why rent control is not right for Phillipsburg. You know, right now, property owners utilize, you know, their properties and it's a business for them. And they keep their properties up to protect their investment. And what that does is it establishes a working relationship with the tenant and the landlord. And when you do that, okay, you have a beautiful rental property. And like I said, many of these people that own one property, they own many more. And so this is why rent control would not work in Phillipsburg. And just keep that quality of life on the rise where the owners and the tenants work together.
Okay, thank you very much. So Mr. Skirbo, how can we ensure a basic level of living conditions for residents and rental units?
Well, I believe it starts with enforcement in our inspections department. I believe they need more inspectors. I know that's a budgetary item. If we cut some waste that we have seen over the past four years with, you know, using too much gas or a town vehicle, we can look at hiring a physician instead of, instead of all the waste that's going on. This will help, help our residents have a better quality of life and hold their landlords accountable. We also, you know, when I go door to door, they always say that, you know, they don't understand why our council president and our mayor, they own all these properties over town and they're not holding the other landlords accountable. And I seem to agree with them when I'm going and I see some of the conditions that these residents have to live in. You know, and it goes back to, it trickles over to the housing authority as well. The mayor had an opportunity to sign off on something that would have made that a totally different aspect of the community.
Thank you so much. Yeah, it's hard for me to tell you time's up because everything sounds so good. I want you to keep talking, but unfortunately, we can't do that. So you have the floor, Mr. Lewis.
All right. So I believe we need to hold both our residents and our landlords accountable. Again, right, if I'm a landlord, I'm doing it because I have a business, right? I want to provide for me and my family. If I have a tenant that's in there, it's not doing their fair share, then I'm the one that's losing out, right? Especially during COVID years, it's hard to get rid of bad tenants. So again, we need to hold both accountable. With that being said, to piggyback off what Bernie was saying regarding, you know, rent control, rent stabilization, again, it goes back to that. Less, it is not an incentive enough as a landlord for me to say, "Hey, you know what? I'm going to do the repairs that are needed." And I believe that the people... And I believe that the people of Phillipsburg deserve better than that. We deserve better than just, hey, I'm just going to do enough for my tenant. We need to do more. And that's what's going to bring people into town, and that's what's going to allow us to be successful as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Paulus, how do you, let's see, how do you hope to have an impact on the opioid and drug problem in the region which many, many towns and cities have?
Again, that falls back around police, improving the conditions in the areas that this is happening. I think South Main Street has been an area that has experienced a lot of drug deals, drug dealers. Getting the community involved. Myself, I live in a neighborhood that has a lot of apartments. I had absolutely no problems contacting the detectives to let them know that I see a lot of suspicious activity. And I would report it. And, you know, I was fortunate enough that the police followed through, and there were drug busts, and next thing you know, they're out of that neighborhood. You have to get people involved to make a difference, and that's why I'm here. And that's why I decided to run for council because that's what makes a difference, is getting involved.
Thank you so much. Okay, Mr. Fay, you're up.
This is a situation where we need to reach out to one of our partners, St. Luke's. They already have a crisis center, okay, and an opioid overdose center, okay? They educate our E N Ts, okay, on everything that's needed to be done. And the key is, we, we need easier access, okay? We needed to publicize it a little bit more, you know, get the phone numbers where people can call out there. So I think by working with St. Luke's, promoting the programs that they already have established, okay, I think by doing that, we could really, you know, crack down on, on the problems that are occurring, but in the same sense, provide that safety and that helpline for that drug addict that needs help.
Thank you. Mr. Skirbo, how do you hope that impacts on the opioid and drug problem in the region?
Well, I think we start with getting the police officers the resources they need to combat the problems with drugs and drug dealers in our town. Just to be honest with you, as we're going to open, there's more drug activity I've seen in my whole life. I'm a lifetime resident. If we start there, we could promote positive things for the youth. We can also, providing those will help kids not fall under the influence of drugs. If we partner with programs like the LEED program, which if I'm elected as a councilman, I would like to, they are a model of addressing addiction, mental health, poverty in our community. Being proactive and meeting these challenges head on can really help our community and hope for a brighter future for everyone. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Lewis?
So I, I, I agree with Bernie, you know, working with our community, community partners on this one. In addition to just tackling the drug abuse, really looking and reviewing what else is needed, right? Because drug abuse affects a lot of people. My mom is a drug addict, you know, and I had to deal with that. And I believe that if there were proper resources there for me as a child, I believe that I could have accomplished much more than, you know, accomplishing my MBA and being a director, being a manager in human resources. So I believe identifying that's important. So once we are able to identify how else we can help, you know, the food bank is a great area that helps individuals of need. So once we identify all that, I believe we'll be in a good spot.
Thank you very much. Here's, here's an issue that the mayor candidates discussed, and I'm sure you'll enjoy answering on this question. How can parking and traffic flow be improved in the different areas of town? We have trucks going up narrow streets, sometimes hitting cars. Today, there was a tractor trailer that hit a telephone pole. Marshall Street, place where it's very difficult for them to go, truck on trucks on Main Streets, all kinds of issues with parking and traffic. So how can parking and traffic flow be improved in different areas of town, Ms. Paulus?
Well, number one, again, is police presence. Having the police available to patrol the streets to make them safer as well as there is legislation on the table now for required GPS for truckers. Going back to your engineer and having your engineer do studies. We have gotten a lot of complaints about speeding. For as many years as I've been attending council meetings, there's always somebody there complaining about cars speeding down roads. There were streets that were one-way that were made now two-way. Maybe they need to go back to one-way. A big issue is the illegal vehicles such as the street bikes that the kids are running now, well, I shouldn't say just kids, or adults. Again, you know, that's an issue that if there were more police available to patrol, they could address those issues as well.
Thank you very much. Mr. Fay, how can parking and traffic flow be improved in different areas of the town?
Well, I, I believe that there's always a solution, and it also identifies that we probably need some more parking garages or locations. I believe an easy solution would be to have parking only on one side so we could widen the flow of, of traffic so that it's more safe for vehicles coming towards each other and back towards each other. And by doing that, you know, it's making everything safer because you have more visual sight, okay? Also, I know there's certain roads that are two-lane that realistically should be one-lane because of the amount of traffic that goes through there. And, you know, I'm on a bus stop, and every day I see the bus stop with, with the stop sign out and people rushing to work and visiting on the other lane, okay? And, you know, eventually, a parent or a child is going to seriously hurt.
Thank you, Mr. Fay. Ms. Skirbo, how can parking and traffic flow be improved in different areas of town?
Well, I think, I do agree that trucks are a problem in town. I live on Madison Heights section of town. I've had multiple tractor trailers come through my neighborhood, damage people's property. We, we do not have curbs in that area. We have young kids playing. You know, it only takes one accident, and it would be a tragedy. I had, did contact the mayor through an email, this was two years ago. I did not get a response on that. We do have signage, but a lot of signage was spray painted or, you know, it's just not clear for them to see. Maybe more signage, more enforcement, if we have more police officers, again, like we've been talking about, we would be able to put them in areas where these trucks are not following signs or their GPS is malfunctioning. And I do agree with Mr. Fay. If we look into maybe some streets where we could go one-way, I, I've witnessed that when we are going door to door, a lot of residents, that is concern for them as well. So those are a couple of things we can look into.
Okay, thank you very much. So, Mr. Lewis, solve our problems. How can we, how can parking and traffic flow be improved in different areas of town?
So I think when it comes to the traffic flow, right, again, examining, examining exactly, doing a traffic study, sorry. You know, what was, the traffic in the town five years ago is not going to be the same traffic now, right? So we need to examine that in order to come up with the right answers. Making sure truck drivers are going exactly where they need to go. I know it sounds very simple in saying that, but being that I worked in the field where we had C D L drivers, you know, some of their complaints were, hey, you know, I didn't see that sign, right? So making sure we have the proper signage that's there. As far as parking is concerned, again, review it and seeing exactly, does that make sense at this moment? And do we need to change that? How are we going to do that? Thank you.
Thank you very much. So that is the individual questions. So the last and final part is for you to give your 60-second closing statement. What do you hope for your legacy to be in town council if you're elected? So, Ms. Paulus, you're on. Ms. Paul, okay. It's, it's time for your closing statements, yes? And if you'd like to say what your legacy will be in town, you're welcome to say it along those lines.
I've always been a public advocate and always will be. Regardless whether I'm elected or not, I'm open-minded, transparent, and am my own person, will never be a yes person for anyone. I'm well-versed in the day-to-day operations of municipal government due to my job experience. I feel like I would be an asset to the town to help our town push forward in a positive and efficient direct direction. Along with my teammates, we have already proven that we can make a difference. We've listened to the residents of the town and have taken their concerns seriously, and we plan on keeping the lines of communication open by holding town halls, a coffee with the mayor, I believe we should have coffee with the, the police officers. I think the police chief should be attending the meetings. I always look at it, you know, when we go to spending money at, at work, I always say, what's the benefit to the, the ratepayer? In this case, it would be the taxpayer. If there's no benefit, we shouldn't do it.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Fay, your 60-second closing statement.
Always wanting to give back to the town that always provided for me and my family. In 2009, I chose to take my business, engineering, economic, and construction management knowledge and run for town council. After winning a seat on town council, I started working alongside Mayor Harry Wyant and the existing council for eight years. Now I can add knowledge in municipal government to that list. As former council president, I worked with Mayor Wyant and council to start the resurrection of our town. This included working with a new developer, weekly meetings and training with the D E P, and negotiations with the Ingersoll Rand remediation team. This provided the foundation of the Bridgepoint Warehouse Project along with establishing a pilot program which made Phillipsburg able to compete with Pennsylvania's Business Opportunity Discounts. As you can see, I'm an achiever who knows how to get things done and work alongside every governing body representative. On Election Day, I ask for your support and vote so I could once again represent you and your families and continue to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Skirbo, your 60-second closing statement.
Yes. Those of you who know me know I'm passionate in town. I'm very passionate about recreation for the youth. If I'm elected as councilman, I would like to take a different approach to recreation. I would like to add arts, music, trails, and recreation. This would reach every child in town, and it would offer them something for everyone, not just sports. This will provide more positive outlets for our youth and help them stay off the streets and help them deter them from joining gangs and being engaged in mischief. This will also provide more opportunities for adults and seniors as well. Those of you who know me, I'm passionate about this, and this is something that I would like to do and be known for as a legacy moving forward in town. Also, would like to also be part of providing an honest government and try to put an end to the good old boys club that has really plagued our community for 20-plus years. We have to move forward in town. We have to look in the past, and we have to move forward with new blood and new people that can provide open-minded ideas. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Skirbo. And last but not least, Mr. Lewis, your 60-second closing statement.
Thank you. As we've seen here tonight, I believe it's clear who the right people are for the town. We can highlight and overexaggerate our accomplishments and committees we're associated with, but at the end of the day, character and ethics matter. You know, I mean, with that being said, I understand people can make mistakes. I mean, when I was four, I believe I spilled candy from a candy store, but does that make me a bad person? I mean, I don't think so. The problem is, is when these mistakes now become patterns, and then they become part of who we are, right? When we continue our pattern of negative behavior such as intimidating people, being unsportsmanlike, or disrespecting elected officials, I mean, these are no longer mistakes, that's just who we are as people. So what's my pattern? Well, when I commit to something, I give it 100%. I did that when I was pursuing my MBA. I do that every day for the last 10 years in the human resources field, whether that's being a manager or a director, leading a team, and changing lives. Any company I've been part of has not folded or failed during my watch. And when elected, this is my continued commitment to you to move Phillipsburg forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So obviously, our candidates here have put a lot of time and effort in preparation in telling us all about them. They did a great job. We heard a lot of great input about what's going on and what they'd like to do to help us and make Phillipsburg better. So I'd like to hear a nice applause for them all. And thank you, everyone, for coming. I appreciate your participation. I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce for hosting this. You all did a great job. And I'd like to thank the school district for letting us use the facility. Our high school, you'll be forever, right? Thank you and good night.